Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, and the time is 5:00 PM. We will begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me remind everyone of the rules of civility in the quorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, if you, any person designed to address the commission shall file a written request with the city clerk and that they'll complete a, they'll complete a comment card which shall contain the person's full name, address, and the number of agenda item. And that card should be turned in prior to the consideration of the agenda item. Thank you very much. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Jose, Mr. Rodriguez, are there any additions, lesions, reorganization of the agenda?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. We'll now turn the consent to the consent calendar. Item 6.1 through 6.10, I believe. Yes, item 6.1 through 6.10. Any comments, questions on consent? Are there any cards? All right, hearing no comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of consent item 6.1 to 6.10.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 7.1, Resolution Number 206-25, amending and restating the investment policy to comply with statutory requirements and establish the city's authorized investment practices. Ms. Soufran.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Bridgette Soufran, Chief Financial Officer. Resolution 206-25 in front of you this evening is an amendment and restatement of our existing investment policy. The city's investment policy is in place to inform and guide how our surplus funds are to be invested. Our existing investment policy was last updated in January of 2019. As the guiding factor for investing in the city's surplus funds, the investment policy's chief objective is preservation of principle. The policy also serves as a way to guide and inform how we select and utilize our financial advisors and banking institutions. It gives framework to the permitted investments, the length of our investments, and the percentage of our portfolio that can be invested per each permitted investment. The policy also covers the reporting needs and guidelines for the composition and purpose of our investment committee. Our current investment committee members include myself, our treasury manager, procurement official, budget manager, and accounting manager, as well as public trust, who's our city's investment advisor. They serve on the committee, but they are not a voting member. Annually, the investment committee reviews the investment policy to ensure that there are no statutory requirements or operational updates that need to be factored into the policy. As the investment policy is a lengthy document that guides the city's investments, it is not expected that the document should be amended each year as the city's investments are generally not short-term investments and we plan and ladder our investments based off of our cash flow needs. In the proposed amended and restated investment policy, we have changed all references to finance director to the chief financial officer. We added new required language to align with Florida statutes, Section 218.415, subsection 24A. We added language per our auditors referencing the city's VIBA plans as an additional scope of the policy and further added language regarding updated reporting. Additionally, the proposed amendments include the removal of certain permitted investment instruments that are deemed riskier and reducing our exposure in those areas. We are aligning the annually, annual continuing education requirements from 10 credits to eight as stated in state statutes. And we are proposing an increase to the number of individuals serving on the investment committee from five to six, as well as adding language that will allow us to facilitate filling committee vacancies in a more timely manner. With that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions? President Lambert?
Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation and the time that the committee puts into that. I was curious about the investment committee expansion. And I didn't get a chance to look at all of the committee members. Is it all internal committee members?
Correct. They are all internal. Right now, all of them reside in finance with the exception of the procurement official. And so by going to, from the five to six, it gives more flexibility for a city administrator and CFO designee so that as turnover occurs within the department or in the case of finance right now, we have the addition of the controller position that was added a few years ago, but we're not, you know, wasn't in the language, but as a viable person to be on the committee.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 206-25.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Mr. Commissioner Boudji was unable to vote.
Aye.
Too late now.
Thank you.
You would have voted if you'd have been here. I understand. Okay, item 8.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5130-25, amending the city of West Palm Beach Code of Ordinances at Chapter 86, Traffic and Parking, creating Article 7 Mobility Fee, Sections 86 through 500 through 516, establishing a mobility fee benefit district and providing for the establishment of a mobility fee fund account.
Good evening, Jessica Keller, Mobility and Transportation Manager. There are no changes since first reading.
Very good. Any questions on this item? We have cards. Thank you. We have one card. Kashid Mahyoudin, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Mr. Mahyoudin?
Yes.
Tell me how to pronounce your name, sir.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kashid Mahyoudin with the Palm Beach County Planning Division at 2300 Jog Road, Palm Beach, Florida, 33411. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item on county's behalf today. County staff has reviewed the proposed ordinance related to city's local mobility plan and fee. These provisions are in furtherance of city's attempts to repeal the county's transportation concurrency proportionate share and road impact fee. The county objects to any and all provisions which attempt to eliminate any of these important funding revenue for the county's transportation network, which is of course important for city's economic viability as well. Our objection is based upon the fact that a municipality does not have the authority to repeal county ordinances. This basic principle was affirmed by the Fourth District Court of Appeal. In an ongoing litigation, the county is engaged in with city of West Palm, uh, city of Palm Beach Gardens regarding this very issue. In that case, the 15th Judicial Court determined and the Fourth District Court of Appeals affirm that a municipality has no apparent right to repeal the county's concurrency or impact fee. The court's preliminary ruling reaffirms our position that the county's traffic performance standard and impact fee regulations are applicable to, applicable in every city, including city of West Palm Beach. Moreover, any attempt by the city to repeal and replace county's road impact fee directly contradicts Section 163.318 C of Florida statutes which provides that the city and county must execute an inter-local government, inter-local agreement to coordinate the mitigation of our respective impacts. County met with city staff on April 16th and has since provided such an inter-local government, inter-local agreement for city's consideration. Furthermore, in light of development of county-wide transportation master plan, we are counties requesting cooperation from all cities, including city of West Palm Beach and cities involved in that, thanks to the city. Any approval of such an ordinance will be premature and we request that city deny or postpone any further action pending outcome of the transportation master plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I, you know, very much support this moving forward and I, you know, I hope that there is a way that we can work together with the county on some of the projects. I know that that was something we talked about during the first reading, that this new, this change will essentially be in the downtown, the money, the impact fees that come in, the mobility fees will be, have to stay in the area where the fees come in and that there will be many opportunities for us to work with the county because we don't own every single road. We don't own every single light. And so I'm wondering, Jessica, are you able just to touch upon that before? I know you mentioned it in first reading about sort of the opportunities that we will have to move for working with the county closely and collaborating with them, but also ensuring that the projects that we permit here in West Palm Beach and especially in the downtown, what we're talking about today, that we have the opportunity to spend those fees in the same area.
Yes, Commissioner. I'm actually caught a little bit off guard this evening. We had a great meeting with the county last week discussing those opportunities and the types of projects that we can work on together and working forward together in developing the inter-local agreement.
And, and I think that we, the city has gone out of its way to articulate our position, both in writing, in, in meetings that I've had with the county administrator, telling them the direction in which we were headed. And at a recent meeting, I, I thought that we were on the same page in terms of how we were going to continue discussions and looking for a path forward that did not include them coming and trying to object to actions that were taken tonight, but that is certainly well within their, the realm of their duty. Not duty, but freedom to do that. Commissioner Ward?
This is more for legal than you, Jessica. While I appreciate it, I know you've kept us up to date, but I was just kind of refreshing myself. I know that the fourth GCA case didn't go the way Palm Beach Gardens wanted to, but that the state legislature still put something together that we should be entering into and working together or if by October 25, and that if not, essentially, they get 10%, you know, developers receive a fee discount of 10% and then we have to split it between county and city? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. The Palm Beach Gardens lawsuit occurred before the legislative changes that you're talking about. Those changes are currently in place. And one of the requirements of the statute, and it's something that the county talked about, was that the local governments get together and develop in their local agreement. Failure to do that by that October 1 date would result in a discount to the developer of 10% that you referred to.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of second reading of ordinance number 5130-25 with no changes from first reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5130-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, asserting the need for adoption of mobility fees, acknowledging repeal of transportation concurrency, adopting the City of West Palm Beach Downtown Mobility Fee Tech, Fee Technical Report, amending the City of West Palm Beach Code of Ordinances at Chapter 86, Traffic and Parking to create Article 7, Mobility Fee Sections 86-500 through 86-517, establishing intent and purpose, providing for definitions, imposition, and exemption of mobility fees, establishing a mobility fee schedule, providing for mobility fee determination, agreements, and credits, establishing a downtown mobility fee benefit district and mobility fee account, providing for expenditures, refunds, land development regulation impact, administration reports, updates, appeals, vested rights, penalties, codification, conflicts, severability, and for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance Number 5133-25, amending Chapter 74, solid waste of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, amending and replacing Article 5, Commercial Collection Franchise, converting to a franchise fee based on revenue rather than volume, and amending and restating the regulations for franchises for the collection of solid waste within the city. Mr. Pender?
Good morning, Mayor, I mean, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Leon Pender, Public Works Director. There's been no changes since the second reading, since the first reading, sorry.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Are there any cards on this item? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance Number 5133-25.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5133-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 74, solid waste of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending and replacing Article 5, Commercial Collection Franchise, providing for, providing a conflicts clause, a codification clause, and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.3, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Number 5132-25, a privately initiated text amendment to Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 4 and Article 19, to provide additional standards for hospital use within the downtown master plan and to further clarify the existing definition for hospitals.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, and Members of the Commission. For the record, Roger Ramdeen with the Office of Schutzenbowen here on behalf of the applicant. As the mayor stated, this is a request for a text amendment to the code. It's a two-part request. The first part will be to amend the DMP code, which is applicable to the downtown master plan. And the second part of the request would be to amend the code as, the standard code, which covers the entire city. So specifically, we'll be asking to amend Section 94106 of the DMP code and Section 94-611 of the standard code. A little background on what the request is related to. A hospital use is permitted in the DMP, but the DMP regulations do not specifically classify a hospital use as a hospital. It actually calls it out as an office use. So the intent here is just to clarify the language in a DMP and add some additional language to the standard code so it's clear what license and agency is, is permitted to allow the hospital use. So in the DMP code, this is a lot of language here, but we're specifically adding a definition in the DMP code for hospital. In addition to adding the definition of hospital in the DMP code, we're also including some language here to set some standards and some requirements for a hospital use. So for example, one of them would, would be that a hospital is only permitted within 500 feet of a residential sub-district within the DMP. I can go through these if you'd like in detail, but it's fairly straightforward, more or less design requirements as it relates to hospital uses and location. The second part of the def, of the request is in the standard code. And again, this is just to add who licenses hospitals. And this definition is in, like I mentioned, in the standard code. There are standards that we have to comply with whenever we seek a request for a text amendment, and these are outlined in Section 9432A. We believe that we comply with each of the requirements. Staff does concur with us. And as far as the process is concerned, on March 12th, the DAC board did recommend approval. On April 15th, the planning board recommended approval. Staff supports our request, and we are here tonight to ask for your approval of the first reading of this request. Again, Roger Ramden with the, with the Office of Schutzenbowen, happy to answer any questions that you may have as it relates to this request.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Okay, thank you, staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Chris Kimerly, Senior Urban Designer. Roger provided a pretty good overview of what the text amendment is for, but I'll just touch on some highlight notes here. So within the downtown use regulations, currently, it does not explicitly state that hospitals are permitted within the DMP. This is generally always implied under the category of office use since we allow medical offices and clinics under that definition. So as you see here in the DMP code, we really only have a residential, commercial, and a parking use. And then these are further broken down into the sections you see there. And typically, we would have categorized a hospital as office, but understanding there are more nuanced conditions to a hospital, we have the proposed language here. Basically, this does create a 500-foot buffer from residential districts. It does permit 24 hours of operation. Requires a site of at least two acres in size. Parking uses are encouraged to be hidden behind the primary building or within a parking structure. And then vehicular circulation, especially with the emergency services, should be designed in a manner that is separate to avoid any vehicular or pedestrian traffic issues. In terms of the general definition here, again, we just specify the correct licensing agency for hospitals within the state, and we outline there that they provide services beyond 24 hours. Staff does recommend approval of ordinance 5132-25 as it meets the standards of 9432A. And both the DAC and planning board had recommended approval as well. Is there any other questions?
Thank you. I do know there is a condo that's being built on Australian, the Berkeley. Is that outside that 500-foot? I don't know if that's a residential district or, but I know that's a-
So that's a, technically, a mixed-use district. It's the Clear Lake District 25, so it is a mixed-use district. It is not a residential sub-district.
All right, so there won't be any problems with that.
Right, so the residential sub-districts would be the northwest and then Providencia Park.
Okay, all right, very good. Commissioner Ward?
I'm just curious, the prior site had the information, but where the two, or maybe one before that, the two acres came from, is that what most, I feel like, what's the average for a hospital?
Yes, so this was kind of taken in reference to other municipalities and their language restrictions for hospital uses, and this tended to be the average size for a larger campus, given that hospitals typically are on more of a campus setup. So this was a good standard that we utilized. Otherwise, we felt that the definition of medical office and clinics that we have already would facilitate those smaller, smaller sites.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Any cards? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance Number 5132-25, amending Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 4 and Article 19, and schedule second reading on June 9th, 2025. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented. The staff report the recommendation of the planning board and the finding that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations. Second.
It's been moved as our second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5132-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Dev, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, Section 94-106, General Uses with Special Requirements in Article 19, Definition, Section 94-611, Definitions to modify the language to provide additional standards for hospital uses within the downtown master plan area, DMP, and to update the existing definition, declaring these proposed zoning text amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning and land development regulations of the city, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.4, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Number 5134-25, a privately initiated text amendment to Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, and Section 94-124, North Railroad Avenue District, to eliminate the heightened stories requirement for residential developments utilizing the downtown master plan housing incentive program.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Joe First. Office is at 1105 North Dixie Highway, one of the principals of the NORAH project. Quick background on where we are. We are delivered all of our Phase 1 retail buildings. We'll have our grand opening in September. We've completed the public-private partnership, which was the streetscape, streetscape at infrastructure. It looks amazing. And our hotel, which some of you were at the groundbreaking of less than a year ago, is already fully topped off and set to be open September of '26, so we've been hard at work. This amendment is specific to our redevelopment parcels, which exist north of 10th Street. And basically, what we've discovered is that we get to our maximum stories well before we get to our maximum ability to use our FAR. And the reason why that's a problem is that the more FAR that we use, the more incentive zoning that we use, because we, NORAH, are the largest user of incentive zoning. And the reason why that's problematic for all of us is that, number one, we can't get to our maximum FAR, but more importantly, our requirement for workforce and affordable housing gets reduced because we run out of height before we run out of FAR. So this request is actually quite simple. It just allows us to remove the limitation on stories, focus just on maximum height, as long as 65% of the project is residential uses, which means that, of course, this would be a residential project and therefore would be also utilizing incentive zoning and creating affordable and workforce housing. Just very quick, and Chris's presentation, I think, is much better than this, so I'll be very brief, just so you can understand how it works. In the NORAH 2 to 8, which is where we first discovered this problem, we can build to eight stories or 125 feet. We are not in any way suggesting we want to build taller than 125 feet. We just want to utilize the 125 feet and, of course, the FAR that we can to get to that capacity. In the NORAH 2 to 15, which sits to the north, same situation, 15 stories and 230 feet. And then our northwestern most site, 20 stories and 305 feet. So again, this would only allow us to pierce those story limitations as long as the projects are 65% residential and therefore using a considerable amount of incentive zoning. Just this shows you the whole ethos- Just this shows you the whole ethos and thesis for the zoning, so this is the idea of transitional height, so that 125 feet is the next height coming off of the hotel, which is at 86 feet, and then we go to the next northern block, which is 230 feet. So this keeps the residential Brelspur Park residential area still protected from height. Reason for the amendment, I just mentioned, if we stuck to the maximum stories, you would see that we would actually have to build 15-foot ceiling heights to get to that height, which clearly doesn't make sense for residential application, hence the reason for the amendment. These are the additional considerations. First and foremost, again, that 65% of the gross building area is reserved for residential uses, that there's a minimum ceiling height of nine feet. That was a staff concern, just to ensure that we were still providing appropriate residential uses and not cramming in, you know, too many units. All the other ones are, I think, are very simple, and Chris can explain them. The impact of the amendment solely just allows us to get to our maximum heights and not be limited by stories, and I think this is the most important. So for the first multifamily project that we are working on, which we'll break ground on some point next year, we would have only had a requirement of 30 affordable units based on building to the maximum stories. When we actually get to use the additional capacity and build at 125 feet, we go to 48 units. We are building those units on-site, so we're very proud. This will be a true mixed-income product, and I think an exceptional product as well. Standards for the code compliance, we comply with all of them, and of course, we had recommendations of approval from both the Downtown Action Committee, the Planning Board, and staff is fully supportive of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. First, before you step down, so just confirm, the workforce housing units that you will be building will be identical to the market rate units, intermixed there, they're not in a certain floor, they're not in a certain corner, they're not segregated from the market rate?
Correct, we're following the ordinance to a Q. We've not yet finalized the exact layouts and positions within the buildings, but I also want to add, this is a Class A-plus multifamily building. So for me, actually got a little bit emotional about it, but I'm a deep believer in mixed-income housing. Growing up in Miami, you really see the difference in the stigma that comes with affordable housing versus market-rate housing. So the fact that we'll be able to have almost 50 residents in this building, living in what would be Class A-plus conditions, I think is something to be very proud of, and I think it's really part of the good work that you guys have done with this ordinance when it first was passed back in, I think, '23, but that's the answer.
Thank you for your commitment to that. It's okay to get emotional. Allergies kind of pass around in this place. Okay, so any questions for the applicant before we turn to Chris? Okay, staff?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Chris Kimerly, Senior Urban Designer. Joe covered a majority of this, but I'll just touch again on some key points here. So when we did the NORA district rezoning, the intention was very much to keep a low-scale residential core, which is the Brelspur Park residential district there, and then progressively transition into higher intensity and mixed-use buildings along the periphery of the district, and we see that today. However, during the rezoning process, the FAR and heights were slightly inflated to accommodate office uses. So office uses tend to have a 15-foot floor-to-ceiling height, and when you translate that into the residential uses, it doesn't quite maximize the same way. So again, this text amendment basically eliminates the stories regulation, allows projects that are utilizing that DMP workforce housing program to eliminate the stories, match 65% of the residential units, and then the finished floor height, again, is that nine feet that Joe had mentioned. And the last three standards here is just because our design tables don't specify above the maximum floor currently. We say, you know, eight stories or 125 feet. So what happens when you do nine, 10, and 11 stories? There's nothing there. So this is just saying that it will match the story below it. And visually, just to see what this does, ultimately, you result in a compression of the building, and so same heights, there's no change to the district heights at all, you just squeeze in an extra story or two. And in this example with the NORA 2 to 8, you're squeezing in three extra stories. Staff does recommend approval of ordinance 513425 as it meets the amendment standards of 9432A, and the Downtown Action Committee and Planning Board also recommended approval. Any questions?
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, and Joe, thank you so much for your patience. This is absolutely incredible, you know, addition to our city. I'm just so excited and can't believe that, how fast-tracked this is. And I guess my question is, I've been hearing about this for about a year, and I understand, you know, we're government and we have all these rules, but I'm worried that something like this seems like a technicality. Is there, will it come up in another district? I know we're just specifically talking about NORA tonight, but I would hate for going forward for something similar to happen and where the applicant is waiting over a year for this little minor issue, which they're not really asking for anything except that we need a text change. So I guess, is there any other district that this might apply to, that we should start considering just changing this citywide, or can you speak to that a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So as I mentioned before, when we did the NORA rezoning, during that process, this specific NORA district maybe was a little bit inflated in those values for the height and FAR. So this is an instance that is unique to the NORA district specifically. However, this specific amendment, we did field by the DMP consultant, Ziskovich, who was doing the downtown master plan update. They agreed with this change in text, and going forward throughout the DMP update, they'll actually assess other districts, whether this is a concern across the board for the downtown. So whether we eliminate stories altogether, we change the heights, values, you know, those considerations will be made during that DMP update process.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? All right, any cards on this? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move-
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5134-25, amending Chapter 94 zoning and land development regulations, Article 4, and schedule second reading on June 9th, 2025. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the Downtown Action Committee, Planning Board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and with the standards in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is our second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5134-25, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 94 zoning and land development regulations, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, Section 94-124 North Railroad Avenue District, NORA, to modify the language to eliminate the height and stories requirement for residential developments utilizing the DMP housing incentive program, declaring these proposed zoning text amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning and land development regulations of the city, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will now turn to the quasi-judicial portion of our meeting, and Commissioners, I will need you to make your disclosures, and we will start with Commissioner Beduzzi, he's always ready.
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 9.1, I have had experte communications with a representative of the applicant and with members of the community. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to item 9.2, I have had experte communications with a representative of the applicant, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. Mayor, just a question on 10.1, is that quasi-judicial also, even though it's an appeal?
It is not.
It is not? Okay, so we don't have to do a disclosure then?
No.
Okay. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
As to item 9.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant and residents. I have received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 9.2, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
President Lambert?
Thank you. As to item 9.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant and members of the community. I have received written communications from representatives of the applicant and the community. I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to items, item 9.2, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant, I have not received written communications, I have not made an investigation, I have made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
As to item 9.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant and members of the community. I have received written communications in the form of emails from members of the community. I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 9.2, I have had experte communications with representative of the applicant, I have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 9.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant, I have received written communications from members of the community as well as the representatives of the applicant. I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 9.2, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant, I have not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, and not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Mayor, may I amend my response?
Yes, you may.
I apologize.
No apology necessary.
As to item 9.1, I have received written communications from members of the public. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Amendment noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 9.1 and 9.2, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item 9.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5128-25 regarding a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately 1.42 acres located at 3705 South Flagler Drive for multifamily high-density residential MF32 to residential planned development, RPD, and a public hearing of Resolution Number 96-25 regarding the development regulations and conditions for the Flagler House residential plan development and granting waivers of the zoning and land development regulations. The above referenced requests are being made by Lindsay Jean-Louise of Urban Design Studio on behalf of PK Flagler House LLC to create the Flagler House residential plan development.
All right, good day, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone. Jermaine Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner, for the record. So as a follow-up to the discussions at the first reading, this rendering was provided by the applicant, which shows the rendering for the proposed Flagler House in green, and this is in relation to the existing Portofino and Harbor Towers shown, which is south of the site. And staff did not receive the front profile of the towers based on a previous image, so staff created the image before you with the information provided for additional visual of the scale. Additionally, the applicant stated at the first reading that they will be creating, one, a pedestrian plaza and dog hydration station along South Flagler Drive frontage, two, decorative crosswalk over South Flagler Drive, and three, a mid-block public access pathway on the side for pedestrian usage. And therefore, these were included in the resolution. Otherwise, the presentation remains the same, and that concludes the presentation.
Okay, very good. Any questions for staff before we ask the applicant, if necessary, to come up? Any questions for staff? Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, we do have several cards. I'm going to call out your, three at a time, and if you could just start making your way toward, does the applicant want to speak? Okay, the applicant does want to speak, okay. We'll have the applicant speak, if the applicant goes first.
Good evening, thank you. Ken Tum with Urban Design Studio, address 610 Clemata Street. I've been sworn in, thank you for having me here this evening. This item was in front of you, obviously, on May 12th, the City Council recommended approval to this evening for an RPD for a site plan and the waivers. As indicated, nothing has been changed. The only new evidence that has been entered into the record is the evidence that was put on the screen in front of you. We request that you rely upon that May 12th hearing as documentation for the subject parcel. However, we do request the opportunity to submit to the record. There are 124 letters of recommendation and requests to be submitted to the record. I'll hand those over-
Present those to the clerk.
-Madam Clerk in a minute. And we also would request, I have 100-page PowerPoint, if you'd like me to go through it. I suspect the answer is you do not want me to do that. However, I do request the opportunity after public comment, the ability to rebut while using the PowerPoint if needed. Thank you, sir.
But when you rebut, you will not use 100-
I will not use it right now, no, sir.
No, you won't use 100 slides-
No, sir.
After.
Of course not.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, your right to rebut is granted. All right, so we do have cards, and I will read off some names, and if you could start making your way toward the podium. Chris Lyon, Jessica Prince, and Amy Triggs. Mr. Lyon? Yes, it's supposed to podium, and state your name, dress for the record, right there, sir, yeah.
Yes, my name is Chris Lyon. I'm speaking on behalf of the owner at 3907 South Flagler Drive, and we've seen the presentation at the last hearing that was done by the folks representing the developer, done by Harvey. We definitely favor the project, we think they've done an excellent job. Not only is the outreach to the neighborhoods and what they're offering as part of their development, we thought it was extremely thoughtful. We also thought that the height and the massing studies that were presented on their vignettes were extremely well put together to show the massing studies in context of the neighboring buildings adjoining that site, and feel that it is a very well-thought-out development that will fit very nicely in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Prince?
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Jessica Prince, I live on Washington Road, less than a quarter mile from the proposed new development. I would like you to consider who's in favor of this project and why, and give it weight and credibility accordingly. Many of the supporters don't live near the site, some stand to gain financial stability off of it. It's usually people selling their condos, the developers who are obviously developing the property, making money off it, or real estate agents who are going to sell the units once the property is developed. So I would like you to take into consideration the voices of long-term residents, families, neighbors, that do not have an agenda with this building. There is a generational investment for us in this neighborhood, not a short-term gain. I want to make you guys aware that the developers came to our neighborhood March 4th, 2025, to present this building to our Neighborhood Association. That's the first we've heard of this development. We've only had two months, two and a half months now, to digest all this information and come to the table with a voice, and we feel that we've been left out of meetings and there's been no collaboration with the neighborhood. The general consensus of the neighborhood is that, including myself, is that we want a new building there. Obviously, the building is deteriorating, and we all feel the same as the residents there. There definitely needs to be a new building. But some of these benefits that the developer has come to the community for, with a playground or a watering station, is just really not what the neighborhood needs with an 18-story building. Why can we not do that with a 12-story building? Why can't we have all these same benefits with a shorter building? benefits with a shorter building? I think there's been a little bit of back and forth on the message of what the neighborhood wants, and there's a lot of opinions, but really, there's only one unifying opinion, is that eighteen stories is way too tall for this neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, and I heard a few say that you did not drive the site or come out to the site. It's all single-family homes, and this building's going to tower over all these single-family homes. So, if you're not out on the site to see that, how can you empathize with the neighborhood? We were all made aware of this far too late in the process, and we wish we had known earlier so we could have collaborated with the city and the developer. Because again, we're not anti-development. We are pro-development, as the city is, but at a shorter scale of twelve stories or less, just to match the grounds there. I would ask you, please do not vote on this building tonight and just hold off of it, hold off on it, so we don't fast-forward this development and set a precedent for other buildings to come into this neighborhood and tower over the residential neighborhood, single-family homes. So, instead, I'd ask you to vote to initiate a planning process for this area because it clearly needs one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy Triggs?
Hi. Amy Triggs, two-oh-eight Monroe Drive. First, thank you for the Commissioners who met with us last week. Many of us didn't even know individual meetings were an option. Otherwise, we would have reached out sooner. Some of you mentioned that four to six stories above the current twelve doesn't seem like a big deal, but when you're actually standing at the site, the scale feels completely out of proportion. The pictures that they showed are very skewed. This building is on a tiny lot, like a postage stamp. Seeing it in person changes your perspective, and I had hoped you all would have visited the site as we asked and saw the charming historic neighborhood of small homes that it borders. But I feel like it should be a prerequisite before voting. But to be clear, we are not afraid of change. We're not anti-development. We support revitalization, and we want to see this Florida Flagler corridor redeveloped. But we don't support waivers that allow buildings to exceed height limits, nor do we want to fight the same battle every time a property changes hands. We want smart, consistent growth aligned with Mayor Jane's vision. We don't want developers deciding how our neighborhoods will look and evolve. This stretch of Flagler is just a quarter-mile long. There's no place for growth around it. It's just a little island of just condos. Nothing is able to go up around it. Portofino sits on four acres. The proposed building would rise even higher on just a quarter of that space. That's not smart growth. That's density without context. Do we really need a ten thousand square foot penthouse with seven bedrooms over five thousand square foot units or a two-level parking garage? The number of units is not increasing. It's thirty-nine in and thirty-nine out, but the sizes are dramatically different. It's not apples-to-apples. There is room to scale back. We've heard this can't set a precedent, but who are we kidding? If you approve this project of eighteen stories, we all know Mr. Oyer or some other lawyer will be here next year, representing the next developer, giving an amazing presentation that he's paid to do, asking for more, and using this as the benchmark. The next one has more land, so we should be allowed to go higher. That's not a plan. That's a runaway train. That's how we end up with out-of-control density and traffic and overzoning for profit at the expense of real planning. And these other developers are sitting here in the audience just waiting to see how this is going to play out. So, we are asking for predictability for us and the future developers. We want to avoid the mistakes of Alba, setting a precedent in Northwood where unregulated growth has led to regret. Let's learn from that. We are asking you not to vote on the project tonight and to put a moratorium in place for just four to six months, hardly a blip in a developer time, and create a thoughtful, clear framework in this area, one that encourages revitalization without sacrificing identity. Let's do what Mr. Oyer said two weeks ago and actually create a happy balance for the neighborhood. This isn't about fighting development. It's about getting it right. Please give us time to plan together. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call out some more names. Start making your way toward the podium. Lisa Reeves, Michael Zeff, and Nicole Dungen. Lisa Reeves.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Lisa Revis of Becker &amp; Polly of Coffin. I represent Portofino South condominium association, which is located on the south property line of the subject parcel. Code section ninety-four thirty-two requires, in reviewing a proposed amendment to the zoning map, the City Commission must consider all eight criteria. This application fails to comply with four of those criteria, specifically criteria two, whether there exists changed conditions which require an amendment. The applicant's justification statement fails to address the changed conditions that require an amendment to the zoning map, and the staff report indicates that the subject property currently has a multifamily high-density residential zoning designation. An amendment is required in order to provide for the proposed RPD zoning designation and the associated multifamily residential development proposal. A request by a developer does not constitute change in circumstances. The record below, including the zoning board and the first reading before the City Commission, fails to address any change in circumstances required to amend the zoning map. Because the record fails to reflect a change in circumstance, the zoning request must be denied. Criteria three, whether the proposed amendment is in conformance with all applicable portions of the city development code. The fact that the proposed amendment requires a multitude of waivers is evidence that the proposed amendment fails to comply with portions of the city code. Criteria six, whether and to the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in significantly adverse impacts on the environment. The rezoning allows for a taller building, which shifts closer to the neighbors. The building will cast larger and longer shadows and impose adverse impacts on the surrounding properties. Criteria eight, whether the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in an orderly and logical development pattern and the specific identification of any negative effects on such pattern. The rezoning fails to result in an orderly and logical development pattern, as the surrounding properties include historic, single-family neighborhood are zoned MF thirty-two and MF twenty. Rezoning this property from MF thirty-two to RPD is the opposite of an orderly and logical development pattern. Because the proposed zoning map amendment fails to comply with all eight of the criteria, the Commission must deny the request. The proposed development is too large for the site if it needs to waive seven code conditions to fit the building on the property. Proof, the applicant is seeking too much, the waiver of the lot size from ten acres to one point four-two acres. Size matters. The reduction to one point four-two acres is an eighty-six percent reduction to the minimum lot size.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Michael Zeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is-
Hold on just a minute. We need tech here. Up on the dais, we're having some issues with our computers. Maybe it's not tech. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Tech two-point-O.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Zeff?
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Michael Zeff. I'm the president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. The project before you this evening was presented to our Government Affairs Committee and thoroughly reviewed, and that body voted unanimously to endorse this project, and we ask you this evening to follow the staff's recommendation and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Dungen?
Hi, good evening. My name's Nicole Dungen. I do live at thirty-seven oh five South Flagler Drive. I've lived there for seventeen years. My grandparents, my dad, we've all lived there since nineteen eighty-five. I would love to stay in the building. The condos are all really small, though. It's not, I'm not able to have a family in there. It's only for one person per unit. The parking is horrible. If you have a guest, there's no guest parking. We have to park along the street, and that has recently changed to where you can't park on the street on Flagler anymore, now that they put the bike lane in. The building does need a lot of repairs, and it's not realistic. I think building, a new building, would do the city really good, brings more tax dollars in, and if you look along Flagler right now, it's all changed. Even the bridge has changed. I think it would fit in great. The developers have reached out to everybody in the neighborhood, asked what they like, and you don't really see that happening a lot. I do hope you approve this.
Thank you. I'm going to read out some more names. Please start making your way toward the podium. Laurel Hanson, Gregory Delia, and Lorene Moore. Laurel Hanson.
Hi. Thank you for meeting with some of us this week. I think we got to meet with everybody except for Commissioner-
State your name and address for the record, please.
Gosh, you're right. Sorry. Laurel Hanson. I live at twenty-eight eighty-one South Flagler Drive. I think we met with everyone except for Commissioner Warren, who was traveling. And I threw at you a couple of handouts, just to see what we're talking about with acreage and addresses. I'm coming back at you tonight to just have you consider a couple of points. I mean no disrespect when I say this, but I don't feel the city's doing its job guiding the growth for this quarter-mile strip of South Flagler Drive. It's really small. We've had two public meetings, and you guys have had private meetings with developers. Not all the Commissioners have walked the site. I don't feel like it's a good way to plan smart growth. Related, and because there are no guidelines in place, no plan, no overlay, it's becoming a Wild Wild West scenario with the developers, and it's getting ugly. Related and Fort are already battling out its control to get control of the current buildings at thirty-nine fifteen, thirty-nine oh seven, and Harbor Towers. There's already lawsuits among the tenants and the boards. Fort is currently running the condo homeowners association at Harbor Towers. Think about that. The developers are already running the condo association. The reason that there's such chaos there, it's because the developers are throwing money at condo owners in the belief that the city will allow as much height and density as they want. You can't really blame the developer for trying to make as much money as they can, no matter how the community feels. That is their job. But you can blame the city for letting them and for not giving it proper consideration. If the developers had guidelines, a plan, knew exactly how many stories and heights and densities these new buildings could be on South Flagler with an overlay, some of the mess going on right now would not be happening. We are absolutely setting precedent for tonight. I know at the last meeting, the planners said that they look at every lot individually. I'm sure they do, but we are setting precedent. Please consider making a motion tonight to pause for the four to six months it would take to make a plan. We're asking for predictability for this community. No one is asking for the building not to be built. We want it to be built. We want all of that area developed. We're just asking for predictability and for a plan. So, I'm now urging you to postpone this vote and wait until an overlay has been done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gregory Delia?
Good evening. My name is Gregory Delia. I am the president at Portofino South condominium association. Thank you all for taking the time. Two things. First, to save time, I want to say that what Jessica Prince, Amy Triggs, and what Laurel Hanson just said, I agree with this. We are hoping that you will consider this. I had hoped when Commissioner Baduzzi had requested that photograph, that you would see something. I don't, the photograph is not representative, you know, from the bridge of the new construction. It's not, it's not a true photograph. Sadly, this building is too tall for the neighborhood. We are not like the Middle Bridge or the North Bridge, where most of the area is surrounded by commercial space. This is one-story families, with the exception of our building and Harbor Towers. Our building, Portofino South, was placed in old ten-story hotel back in nineteen seventy-one. I would have fought that if I'd lived in one of the homes at that time. We're asking for development, but responsible. Eighteen stories is not responsible. When you stand there and look at it, it's going to be sixty feet taller than Portofino South. And you see what that looked like. That rendering that we saw does not show a building that's going to be sixty feet taller than Portofino. I agree with everyone. We ask that you take the time to put this on hold, and let's meet with everyone so that we can have something that we all would like to see. We're all in favor of redoing the building. The building that's there needs to be taken care of, but what can we do responsibly? This is a historic district, and it would be nice to see something on a responsible level. Finally, I'm finishing up what Lisa Revis said. Proof that the applicant is seeking too much, the waiver of the lot size from ten acres to one point four acres. Size matters. The reduction of one point four acres is eighty-six percent reduction to the minimum lot size, not ten or twenty percent, but eighty-six percent. The ten-acre lot size is critical, as it allows more space for the development and enhancements for the residents in the community. This site is not large enough for the proposed development without major concessions of the code requirements. Residents rely on codes when they purchase, and if the city approves this request, they're basically saying that nothing in the law can be relied on. More and more residents are complaining about increased density, increased traffic, and increased building heights, which is limiting and/or reducing the quality of life within the West Palm Beach. But you have the opportunity to let residents know that you have been heard, and we've been heard, and that the size of the building, so it remains compatible with the surrounding areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Lorene Moore?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Lorene Moore. I'm here with my husband, Don. He's in the back row. I'm speaking for both of us. We are owners of the thirty-seven oh five Flagler House, and we do strongly encourage that this go forward. We think it's going to beautify the neighborhood. Everybody's going to really benefit from this growth. I feel that, I did hear the last couple presentations, and we do feel that the developer did reach out to the community and tried to hear their concerns and work with them, and so we ask you that you support the development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have some more cards. Shannon Moriarty, Sean Moriarty, and Robert Dirk. Shannon Moriarty?
Good evening. Shannon Moriarty, three-three-four Marlborough Road. That's in the Prospect Park neighborhood. It's right there in the historic neighborhood. I've lived there for fifteen years in a historic home from the nineteen thirties, single-family. We have a beautiful neighborhood, and I think that this building is just going to make it more beautiful. It is slender, as proportionate to the property. It had to be made slender to make it fit properly and to not become a massive item that's sitting in the middle of this property and just taking up space and blocking everyone everywhere. It's green. It's tall. It's beautiful. It's going to improve the neighborhood. I believe that the rendering we were shown tonight is accurate. People say, "Come out and see. You're going to see that the building's not going to fit." You can't see that from now. I mean, the building that's there is atrocious. It's old. It's ugly. It's unsafe, and it needs to be replaced. This developer has been contacting us. I live in this neighborhood. I belong to this neighborhood community. They have been contacting us for months. I mean, October, possibly earlier than that. People have had plenty of time to digest this. They asked for input. We were able to give input. They have created a beautiful building that's going to have the same number of units. So, when people talk about massive density, I mean, Portofino South has way more residents, way more. So, this building is not being replaced with something that's going to have way more residents. It's going to have the same, and it's going to generate so much income for this city. Think of all the wonderful things that the city can do for the residents with two-point-seven million dollars. That's a lot of money. The developer is offering to make improvements to the neighborhood. They're going to help neighbors with parking and so many things. They have been so wonderful. Let's stop talking about this. Let's start moving. Change is inevitable. The city's going to constantly be changing codes and changing things, and just because this is an eighteen-story building doesn't mean every building's going to want to be eighteen stories. Other land is larger, so they can make it wider instead of taller. It's all different, and it, and we need to be done talking about this, and we just need to move forward. Let me just say that I live here full-time. I vote here. I'm active here. I'm in a lot of different organizations, and this is going to make our city better and more beautiful. Thank you for approving it tonight.
Thank you very much. Sean Moriarty?
My name is Sean Moriarty. I live at three-three-four Marlborough Road. I've been a resident for about fifteen years in the Prospect Park neighborhood. I'm highly in favor of this. I've had the privilege now of attending three city council meetings. I've seen multiple presentations from many different projects. Anyone who has seen this project and the presentation for it knows the thought that's gone into it, the community outreach, the beautification, the tax increase. It's a huge positive for the neighborhood. It'll fit in fine. Talk about how the rendering wasn't from the right perspective. That makes more sense. The one that the neighborhood is sending out in the historical society or Historical Homeowners Association is completely ridiculous. It's taken from an angle where it makes the building look double the size. It's only sixty feet taller and will fit in just fine. Again, the amount of landscaping, it's just going to be a big plus for the neighborhood, much more beautiful. And I would say last, and I mentioned this last time, be careful what you wish for. If this doesn't happen, who comes in next and makes another plan that's not as beautiful, not as well-thought-out? not as well-thought-out, and takes only 10 stories but is from Flagler through to Washington? It'll be a monstrosity. This is thought out properly. Thank you very much. I hope you propose this or approve it.
Thank you. Robert Dirk?
Hi. How are you? Robert Dirk, and I live at the Flagler Yacht Club, which is 3701 South Flagler Drive. I'm definitely for this building and I want to say that some people have gotten up here and said that everyone who's for it doesn't live around here. Well, I live the closest to this building of anyone in this whole county. My unit is closest to this property as you can get. The developers were very good. They came to us, they asked us our opinions on what we thought would make good changes. They listened to us. The building is beautiful and the front of the building is towards the water, isn't high. Everything they've done with the gardening, putting the path in between so that people can walk down there to go fish or walk or do whatever they do, they can do it before they had to sneak through properties and stuff and there was some issues there. So they've done everything we've asked them to do. The person who mentioned that everyone else lives away is a quarter-mile away, so it's not even in their view whatsoever. The Portofino, a gentleman came up, he was on the board and talked about that. I mean, when the Portofino went up, I'm sure people came up and had problems with that, being that there's a whole bunch of apartments and it's very tall. My building is four stories. We don't have a problem with Portofino's height, never have, and I don't see why, just because someone's going to be the new tall person to block is such a scare. So I think it's going to be a beautiful building. I looked at all the renditions and it looks actually perfect. It'll fit in perfectly and take over a building that's falling down and make it a lot better. Thanks for your time.
Okay, so I've got a few cards here of people who did not want to speak, but they wanted their comments read, so before we have the applicant come back up and address some concerns, we'll read these cards into the record. This is from Roberta Michele. She lives at 3705 South Flagler Drive, Unit 9. The developer listened to people in the area and adjusted the building design to improve view corridors. Instead of a short, wide building that blocks views, this design maximizes obstructions to neighbors. I'm not sure that's what she, this design maximizes obstructions to neighbors. The additional landscaping to the property will elevate the public walkway, will elevate the beauty of the property even more, provide safer environment for locals. The public walkway is a huge benefit and will provide safety. Don Moore, 139 Creary Road. We fully support this project. Mac Lowe, 6832 Wilson Road. I fully support this project and truly believe it will enhance the neighborhood. Joel Colombo, who says, "I own a substantial amount of property near the proposed building and fully support this plan. The design is thoughtful and well-executed, elegant without being overbuilt, and well-suited to the site. The developers have excellent reputations and truly prioritize quality and community fit. I believe their involvement would be a great asset to the neighborhood." Okay, so those are all the cards. Applicant, do you want to come and offer any rebuttal?
Good evening again. Ken Tumuth, Urban Design. I'll be very short this evening, just a couple of responses. First thing, density and height, those are two completely separate things. It's important to note, this project could request 46 dwelling units. They're requesting 39 and net reduction of seven units, so the overall density is less than what your zoning code allows. The second part is, tomorrow, if we wanted to, we could come in with a building that was 100 feet tall. Go to your building department and it would be 25 feet off, 25 feet off of Flagler, 25 feet off Washington, and it'd be 100 feet long. The public realm would not be good. The view corridor for Portofino South would not be good. So today's discussion is really about balance, a balance between design, economic feasibility, and responsible planning. The proposed 18 stories isn't an arbitrary number. A lot of thought went into it from a design standpoint. It comes as a result of input, both public and our clients, working through the design team, and then also the meaningful public benefits that you heard in detail in the last presentation that I'm not going to repeat tonight. But what it doesn't do, by reducing the building by a certain amount of height, it doesn't really reduce it. In fact, I would say the impacts are more consequential. If you just sit and think about it, the square footage doesn't go away. The unit size doesn't go away. The building gets smaller, it gets longer and wider, therefore blocking more views. So I think it creates more unintended consequences. You're redistributing that square footage. Your public realm is not as nice. The project today has 109 feet off of the west side and 120 feet off of the east side in regards to where the tower element is. So this is a good design. A lot of thought went into it. We have our whole team assembled. We're requesting your approval this evening, tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have a question for staff. There was a mention, I believe, by an attorney who suggested that several of the required criteria were not met. What is staff's analysis of the required criteria and the compliance of this project with those criteria?
So, when staff reviewed, reviewed based on the conditions that were needed, it was definitely met. Most of the responses were pretty much subjective. You know, there isn't really 10 acres available in present day, so that's not a feasible request for applicants coming in because it pretty much doesn't exist. So, the change condition is that there is, based on the present lot sizes, it would require for the plan development which is available to the applicant.
Okay, so when staff review, all required criteria have been met?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to follow up on that in a second, Jermaine. Can you explain the changed conditions again? You said that, what are the changed conditions?
So, what was existing before in terms of what available land before, like 10 acres isn't something that is available to applicants to have the plan development request? So, most of the land is pretty much infill and it doesn't meet that requirement. So, based on the present condition, that would be, that would pretty much state what is needed, the change condition itself.
President, did you have something to say, Anna Maria?
Yes. Mayor, Commissioner, Anna Maria Ponte, Assistant Development Services Director. If I can add a little bit on that, the change conditions is one of the easiest to answer in terms of compliance with the code requirements because the city has changed substantially since the building was originally developed. The three stories that was originally developed with the building, right now, the development pattern has changed, the demands for the size of the units, the demands for covered parking has changed. Nobody builds anymore a building with exposed parking. So those things have changed that justify the redevelopment process. So we are going through that process in the city and that's one of the standards that's easiest to meet. Like, the conditions have changed substantially in the city and the city is evolving all the time. And the demands for market, for the size of the units, again, the type of units, the views that are demanded, like all the conditions have changed that justify tearing down a previous three-story building and building a brand-new building. So that's easy to justify.
So changed conditions don't necessarily mean conditions on that particular parcel. It could be conditions throughout the city.
Well, it does also, but it's conditions throughout. The parcel has changed. For example, the fact that the building has, is right now in disrepair. It's a change condition. It's not the same that when the building was new. So those, those basically trigger the desire to demolish the existing building and build a new building, and those are changed circumstances for redevelopment.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up?
And then what would be the height if they didn't ask for anything? I just want to clarify that, so.
It's 100 feet, 100, like with the setbacks? Yeah. Part of the issue that we have with the current regulation is the current regulations for multifamily are, were designed, again, changed conditions, a long time ago for larger parcels. So they're subject to basically, the height of the building is allowed to go higher the further you set back from the property line. So when we are on these infill sites, that regulation is not conducive for new development. So if we pick smaller sites and they have to meet the site setbacks, the properties will, the buildings will start to get very skinny and not really viable for the redevelopment. Ken, what is the exact one for this one?
I have a slide if you'd like.
Okay.
Slide 27.
Sorry.
We'll show the building. It's 100 feet of height.
How wide is the building?
What are we looking at?
So in this case, if they comply with the site setback, the site setback will be 50 feet on each side and the building will be 50. So for example, in that condition, you could not fit a parking garage under that 50-foot in width because you cannot fit it. So, and that's part of the problem. I think, I mean, like looking forward, we need to develop new regulations for these infill sites because the current rules only, the only viable option for a developer is basically apply for residential plan development. It's very difficult to develop these infill sites under.
Okay, let's just deal with the current situation. We can't solve all the problems now. Okay, we've got to deal with the current situation. Okay. President Lambert?
Thank you. I do have a question, but just to that comment, there was some discussion at the end of the last meeting where we did talk about, you know, looking at these sites, looking at infill sites, working with staff. Mayor, I know you weren't here, but there was some discussion about, you know, wanting to have that for the future of these sites, and so I do hope that we're able to do that moving forward. So I met with some of the residents this past week, previous weeks. I wholeheartedly believe them when they say, "It's not that they're anti-development." I get that what you're saying is you, you do want something nice and beautiful there for the neighborhood. However, you're not in favor of what is currently proposed. One of the things that I heard was that the neighborhood wasn't included in community outreach. And I just, I have a question for staff and then for the applicant. I would imagine, but I want to verify, did the applicant meet, obviously, and I understand it's the minimum requirements, but did they meet the requirements? And what were those requirements for community outreach?
So, pretty much the applicant had to meet, had the advice of the director at the time. He had to pretty much meet with the community and at least show evidence that they met with the community, and that would be a correspondence that would be between the, that would be directed towards the development services as to what was done and if they met, if they met it sufficiently.
Mr. Tumuth, can you tell us what community engagement you guys involved in?
I have a slide, as I said before, number 99.
I'm sure you do.
Yes, sir. It's actually number 89 to be exact.
Okay, we're making progress here.
Yes, sir, we're making good progress. On the screen in before you are the neighborhood meetings, including both Southland Park and Prospect Park, which were held in March of this past year. We met in November with the Central Park residents, in October with Harbor Towers and Southbridge, in October with South Portofino and Flagler Yacht Club. And there has been a tremendous amount of other individual meetings throughout this process. While I personally didn't attend all the meetings, I did attend several of them and they were very conducive and we learned a lot along the way, like what was important. Public realm was important and other items. So yes, sir and ma'am, there have been a significant amount of public outreach meetings.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
Yes, thank you. And I don't know if you know this, Mr. Tumuth, or staff, so is, usually there's a set number of feet from the development that we must notify, signage, things like that? Was that complied with?
Yes, we've met, we've met, absolutely. That, and I'll let staff, the exact foot, I believe it's 500 feet. It is 500 feet, yes, all the mowers were placed.
And then it was brought up and you pointed out as well that the meeting with the Southland Park was in March, the others were October, November. Is that neighborhood association outside of the realm or is March within the timeframe of which you were to conduct those meetings?
So the actual, there are no legal requirements for having these meetings. These are above and beyond the requirements, but that Southland Park is way beyond the 500-foot radius.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, for staff, Commissioner Peduzzi?
Just have a comment?
A comment, question, yes.
Perfect. I do support this project, but I also support the need for an increased amount of predictability. But that's easier said than done because if we are trying to provide predictability by changing our development code, that's not going to, even if we allow for extra height in these areas, it's not going to preclude a developer from requesting a waiver. So if we go in and, and do some changes to our code to allow for that predictability with regard to height, and we say, "Okay, instead of 12 stories, you're going to be allowed 18 stories." They may stick to the 18 or they may come and ask for a waiver of more than 18. So I guess you have to be careful what you ask for. Right now, you've got, you know, a set height that someone can ask for a waiver, but that height is actually, is 12 stories right now. If we, if we were to go and change the code, the, the set point might be a lot higher than that and they will still be able to request waivers. So it's tough. I understand. I hear you as, as our constituents and as our residents, that you would like to see that predictability. But each of these development requests is taken, you know, individually and we as a body need to determine whether they meet the requirements of the code and, and whether they fit into our neighborhood considering the trajectory that the city is on. And for that reason, I do support this project, but I do also support the need for some predictability if it's even possible.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Peduzzi. And again, I think we all have to do, we do our crash courses on each of the items that are presented with us and I know I've learned a lot just being a commissioner about development and the eccentricities and, and why you can't just, you know, chop a couple stories off and what that does to, you know, the elevator shafts, the ventilation, all the stuff, the learning far more than I thought I would on development structures. But I will say, just what I've learned in the north end is that you can create predictability and you can create a stopping point. You know, the reason why you can create the height now is because of the setbacks, but if you don't permit that as a way out, from what I understand, and I guess this would be a question for staff, is that you can set a height. Now, do we want every building to be the same height in a corridor? No. There will be flexibility. There's already development, you know, 3611 is newly developed. It's not going anywhere and I appreciate that because it does abut single-family right next to it. But I do think that there is a way for us to create predictability and I think that just speaking from what we talked about last meeting and, and the lessons learned in the north end is, I really wish we had done that because it, they do come back asking for more because you want to make money and you want to offer the best product there is for the next person and the next person. But we all moved here at a different time for a reason and there were negatives and positives, and there's such positives from some of these new developments. And I have stated to the residents and to others, I did, you know, I do, I don't think 18 stories is out of the realm in this area. I'm very worried about what the next person requests if we don't get a hold of this because that's exactly what's happening on North Flagler Drive. And we're having to do this every single time and I wish that we had been a little bit more firm a few years ago saying, "No, we will create an overlay like we're doing now because it's a time we're running against the clock. Everyone's moving in and it's not alba height. It's, it's more and, and we're having all the meetings and the residents are getting weary. The staff gets weary." And so I do think that there is a designated area, if you drive around, to create here and to figure that out with the residents because if not, we're just going to be back here talking about 3901, 3907, 3701 pretty soon, so.
President Lambert?
Thank you. I think there's a lot of good conversation around this and all of that being said, I did just want to reiterate something that I said at the last meeting, which was that, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about preserving the character of the neighborhood and I, one of the reasons why I have been supportive of this project is because I believe that supporting the character of the neighborhood is more than just about height. That is one element of it, but that it's all about quality of design, walkability, and how the building interacts with the public realm. And I did receive an email and I try to read and respond to as many emails as I can about this, but I read one that said, "Please respect the residents who built this neighborhood." And I appreciate hearing from residents in favor and against who have lived here for a very long time. And what I would offer is that I believe with the right approach, that we can grow in a way that respects the past while also embracing the future. And I'm hopeful that if that is what we do here today, that, you know, we all continue to build with that in mind.
Commissioner Ward?
I just, I'm curious. I just am curious what, I know now what Commissioner Peduzzi thinks, I'm just curious what everybody else thinks, because I don't want this to just be conjecture and discussion. Should we move forward in trying to create a plan for this area? Because it's not, I know this is not the agenda item right now, but it is very much relates to it. So, that's my question.
Let's, let's deal with the issue at hand, and perhaps in commission comments or something, if you wanna ask that question. And we can instruct the city administrator maybe to take a survey, but let's, let's not get sidetracked because we have a decision to make tonight, and that's tangential, but not directly related. So, let's, let's try to get through this decision point. Are there any other questions or comments on this particular project? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna start by saying thank you to all the residents that were here tonight and those who called us and emailed us and spent time with, with us after the last meeting to weigh in, and I appreciate hearing from all of you. I think what I heard a lot tonight also was talking about height and density, and to me, that those two are not the same thing. So, I do wanna separate those because I think, moving forward, all of the lots that are in this neighborhood on Flagler, they're different sizes, they're different, it's, I think it's not a one-size-all solution for me going into this project, which I do support in part because knowing that it's the same density, to me, that is different than saying, you know, we're putting in an eighteen-story building and we're gonna have two hundred units. You know, that's, gives me pause. But when I look at this building, I think it's beautiful, I think it is the character of the neighborhood, and I think it's, the density stays the same. One thing, you know, I mentioned last, last, in the last meeting, is I live downtown, I do like walkability, I like the density because it, you know, brings more services to the neighborhood, but I know that that's not, that's maybe more of the issue that you're having than the height. But, you know, I live next to a tall, skinny building that used to be a five-story concrete building. And when I would look out in the morning, it was terrible. It blocked the sun, I couldn't, it was not like an energizing feeling. Now, it's bright, there's windows, there's, there's landscaping. And so, I think some of the issues that come with change, you know, that are hard. And so, I'm glad that we could hear all of your voices tonight, but, you know, the city is changing, and I think we have the reality of the condo crisis that they're having in, in the city south of us right now, that, you know, I've heard from many residents that are living in this building, that three projects have been turned down, you know, it's, it's, we're facing that in several of the lots there. And as a person that's trying to be a leader in this city, I also have to look at that aspect, too. I think this is a beautiful project, we're so lucky that the developer took the time that they did to really be thoughtful. And so, I'm very happy to move this forward. I agree with my colleagues, what they've said tonight about how can we make a better plan for the future, to make sure that we have heard everyone's voices and that if you felt like you didn't come to the table early enough this time, that we can start discussing that. But I, you know, I also do see the challenges that every single one of these projects is not the same size, it's not the same lot. The developer might not want the same thing, and I don't think we want, you know, universally standard, maybe, buildings. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind, but I do look forward to having more conversations with anyone that wants to have them tonight. I'm very supportive of this project, but I do appreciate hearing from everyone. Thanks.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing that I'd like to say is that an increase in tax revenue is not the sole driving factor in making a decision for me. And I think that it is important to consider tax, tax impact, but it is not in and of itself a reason to vote for or against a particular project. I do recognize that they're doing unit for unit, thirty-nine units for a new thirty-nine units, but I do also believe that there is a difference in the density of those thirty-nine units, where now it's one person per unit versus the larger units being able to accommodate much, a, a single-family or a much larger amount of people that would be able to reside in the space. I don't believe that that would have an adverse traffic impact. So, that is something to take into consideration as well. But for me, I think what's really important is not just what is existing there today, but looking at the future of West Palm Beach and having a vision that encompasses what West Palm Beach is today and where West Palm Beach is going, instead of simply looking at where we've always been because we can't stay there. So, I would absolutely move forward in supporting this, but I do believe as well that there should be plans in place to ensure that there are guidelines and regulations, and we don't continue to see higher and higher and higher density requests, because I do believe that that is highly possible.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I think we've gone through all the cards, so if there aren't, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number five-one-two-eight-two-five at second reading to change the zoning designation of approximately one point four-two acres located at three-seven-zero-five South Flagler Drive from multifamily high-density residential MF thirty-two to residential plan development RPD. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with a comprehensive plan and the standards in sections ninety-four dash three-two, ninety-four dash three-five C, ninety-four dash two-zero-seven of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Oh, okay. Is your mic on? Okay, it's been moved in second at discussion. All right, hearing none. Madam clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five-one-two-eight dash two-five, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by rezoning one parcel located at thirty-seven oh five South Flagler Drive, approximately one point two, one point four-two acres, from multifamily high-density residential MF thirty-two to residential plan development RPD to create the Flagler House Residential Plan Development zoning designation, providing for the establishment of development regulations by separate resolution, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Peduzzi, you wanna make this other motion?
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number ninety-six dash two-five to establish development regulations and conditions for the residential plan development RPD and granting waivers from the zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Give people a few moments to leave quietly, hopefully. All right, item nine point two, public hearing of resolution number one fifteen dash twenty-five regarding a request by Roger Ramdean of Shuts &amp; Bowen on behalf of City Place Retail LLC for the approval of a major plan development amendment to the City Place Commercial Plan Development. One, to amend the Rosemary Square Core Development Regulations to expand the boundary of the Rosemary Square Core to include the B Block Hibiscus Garage. Two, to create the Hibiscus Garage Subarea covering the expanded area. And three, to reestablish City Place to replace the Rosemary Square nomenclature. Mr. Ramdean?
Good evening again, Mayor, Madam President, members of the commission. For the record, it's Roger Ramdean with the Office of Shuts &amp; Bowen, here on behalf of the applicant. As the mayor stated, we do have this request for you tonight. It is a request for a major PD amendment to the Rosemary Square Core Development Regulations. It is a three-part request, first being the request for the new subarea, which is the Hibiscus Parking Garage, the second being the associated regulations that would apply to the new Hibiscus Garage Subarea, and the third one, we are renaming the city, the Rosemary Square to City Place. So, in reference to that, as I go through my presentation, I'll be referencing this, the area as City Place. A little background on here, the Hibiscus Parking Garage is not currently located within the City Place Core or the road, what was, was Rosemary Square. And the Hibiscus Garage does provide the majority of the parking that's being utilized in City Place. And we would just like to provide, include this subarea, this parking garage in the subarea so that the parking can be readily available, and we can provide some additional parking as required for future needs for City Place. So, currently, the, the City Place subareas are in color, as you can see on this particular slide, with the Hibiscus Garage as proposed to be added colored red. The cross, the cross-stuff map, as you can see, does not include the Hibiscus Garage. What this does by adding it into the, into the City Place regs is it allows us to include regulations that would apply to the Hibiscus Garage. As it currently stands, there are no regulations other than the city code that would apply, and also those that are included in the, in the City Place DRI. As mentioned before, the intent here is to provide additional parking for the entire City Place area. In addition, we'd like to take some of the on-street parking that people utilize, make it more pedestrian-friendly, and provide that parking in this parking garage. So, what we're doing here is we're adding a seventh story. So, theoretically, we're adding two levels of parking, one with the new seventh story and one with the roof parking on that seventh level. As with any major PD amendment, we are required to demonstrate compliance with the code, specifically it's section ninety-four thirty-two. We believe that we comply with all the requirements, staff concurs, and the planning, just a little background again, on April fifteenth, the planning board did recommend approval of this request, staff does also recommend approval of this request, and we respectfully request your approval of this request tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. Did you say that there is an impact to the on-street parking?
No, I said, what I said was, we would like to remove that parking, not that it's gonna be removed, but people can now park in the parking garage versus using the on-street parking, making it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Snyder, are you gonna speak to this?
Good evening. For the record, Eric Snyder, principal planner. How y'all doing tonight? So, I just wanted to give a little more background. Mr. Ramdean covered a lot of the points on this. The reason that the additional stories need to be on this, if you remember about a year ago, six months, a year ago, we, the applicant was in front of you on the, the, build the two towers that used to be where Movie Co. and Brio, that block, were. The original plan had been in the garage, and you kinda saw it on the slide that was shown here. I'll pull it up here real quick. So, what ended up happening is, the black part of the building was the original plan, and so those, that lower garage was going to have, on each level, a two-level parking lift system, so two cars parked on top of each other. The applicant realized that the, because of an office use and all the people coming in at that time, the valet operations would be outrageous to have those cars parked. So, they came before you and were approved to add another two levels on top of the, where the black portion of the building is to this, where you see that light tan color, and then go to eighty stories, so seven levels, eighty stories, which is now, but that was not enough parking spaces because, just the way parking decks work out. So, they had always the plan and had actually applied with us, and we were working through some issues, on doing the same thing on the existing garage that you see there with the two darker, cocoa-colored levels on there. So, this will now accommodate all of the parking that is required for those two office towers you see there. It's just gonna be in two garages. And you see the new elevator, the reason for that is, the plan is for the applicant to put the new office parking on the upper levels, and then they would take the, people would take the elevator down to Hibiscus Street, then walk across to the entrance to the office tower. This parking similar, of office uses on the top is similar to what, and you see the office tower in the background there, the City Place Office Tower that's on Okeechobee, they have some parking spaces in the building, and then additional parking spaces on the roof of the current garage that would continue, but it's a nested area, so during the day, the office users park there, and then when office users are done, they open it up, and then the retail clients for City Place can use that, which is what's gonna be happening here with those extra levels of garage. So, I just wanted to point that out as to, really, why are you seeing this now on this building, on this garage, as opposed to just the old, the Movie Co., the old Movie Co. Garage? So, are there any questions of staff?
Is staff recommending this?
Oh, so, sorry, yes. As Roger said, staff is recommending approval of this. The planning board did find this meeting all the code requirements, and so did staff, and recommended approval at their public hearing.
All right, very good. Any questions for staff? President Lambert?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate that we're being creative about parking and not adding additional parking structures. So, will there be any parking in those buildings?
So, the tower that you see closest in the foreground, next to the garage, the way that they actually did this is, the parking goes, those parking levels that you see, and I don't have a great picture of that because I didn't bring that, but they actually transition into the middle of the garage. So, levels, I wanna say off the top of my head, three, four, five, and six of the parking garage there actually go into the building. So, they do have aligner uses, you kinda see that little area there, there's like a plaza here that has some retail and office use on it, and they go out on the plaza, and then the upper levels are actually garage through here, and then it starts here with office all the way up. So, it's, they need a thousand parking spaces for these two buildings, or even maybe a few more. So, they have, all that's now taken up in this building, in this garage that goes through into the buildings, as well as the excess levels that they're putting here on the rooftop. So, they're not really gaining more parking than they have to do for the two buildings there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, or for staff? Any other questions for the applicant? Do we have any cards? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number one fifteen dash twenty-five. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and with the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now turn to item ten point one, which is an appeal of the Historic Preservation Board's decision in case number twenty-five oh five, a request by Christina Anthony of Turn to Construction LLC for the approval of a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of a new single-family house at eight sixteen Third Street. This does not look like Christina Anthony.
Not Christina Anthony.
Okay. Stay for your records, stay for the records, or your name and address.
My name is Lamont Humber, I am the president of the Signa Foundation.
You gotta get closer to the mic.
My name is Lamont Humber, I am the president of the Signa Foundation, address is eight-two-two North Tammeran Avenue, West Palm Beach. First of all, guys, I'd like to state Christina is our general contractor, she normally does this, but this evening, I thought I would come before you, as I was the original person to start this project. I usually let someone else speak because I speak from the heart, and normally, that's not always a good thing. But I'm gonna do my best to stick to my slides this evening. First of all, Mayor, commissioners, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. I've come to this community a few years back, and since then, my wife and I have jumped in, not just feet-first, head-first. We try to do the best that we can to do as much for this community as possible. This is one of those projects that we've taken on. I'm gonna speak to... I'm going to speak to you about a few things. Can we get this one to also show the same thing? Or I need to turn around? It's all right. I'll tell you what, as long as you guys can see it, that's the most important part.
Or it's not showing up on your screen?
Here we go.
Oh, there we go. All right. Few agenda items and we'll do our best to walk through this. I know you guys have had a long night. What we have here is a workforce housing project that was originally put out by the CRA as an R F P. We responded to the R F P and was awarded, and we were awarded the project in November twenty twenty-three. It took some time, but finally in July, we were able to close, you know, eight, nine months later. Within sixty days of closing, we were able to get a conditional approval for the building permit. From there, in December, we needed the certificate of appropriateness. And that's what we went to the Historic Review Committee for. And that's where we sit today. Little bit about the property itself, it's a traditional, single-family lot located near and in the historic Northwest. It's been owned by the CRA for quite some time. It was set aside for workforce housing and it's been vacant for over twenty years. We put twenty years because that's what we know on record. Just a quick overview, this is the same lot as it looks today, three different angles, just to let you see the lot itself. It is fenced in, we fenced it in, number one, with the hopes of being able to start putting the foundation in there. But more importantly, to stop people from dumping trash in there. That's what this lot looked like prior. I have pictures with loads of trash. The sad part is, that's where the kids also play. This is our proposed layout and the picture on the left, you can see that would be the top portion of that. I used to have a little clicker here with the red dot, but I don't have it. I didn't touch anything, it wasn't me. The picture on the left, that, the top portion of it would be Third Street. As you can see, there's a walkway that enters into the property, there's a small porch there. It enters into a fourteen hundred square foot property. Continuing on through the home, through the back, another walkway. This was not part of the plan, but as we talked to everyone and Signet Foundation, as we got together as a group. We decided to put in a concrete driveway because we thought that would be a very, very nice touch for the new homeowner. So the picture on the right is what we proposed for the new home. And we'll talk a lot more about that picture here in future slides, further slides. This is the actual interior, once again, starting from the left, this entry door, right into the living room, dining room, kitchen. There's a laundry room there. If you look in the lower left-hand corner, bedrooms three and two have a guest bathroom there. And then master bedroom has an en suite. It's fourteen hundred square feet under air and that's pretty typical of the houses in the neighborhood. I've come to you because the Preservation Board originally denied our decision based off of standards nine and ten of the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Additional compatible criteria set forth in the Historic Preservation Ordinance. And once again, I'll get into detail about each and every one of these. Obviously, we've passed the other eight. Standard nine, what is standard nine? Standard nine states, "New additions, exterior alterations or related new constructions shall not destroy the historic material that characterizes the property." I showed you guys the property, right? Okay, "The new work shall be different, differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with amassing size, scale and architectural features. To protect the historic integrity of the property and its investment, excuse me, and its environment." This is where I'm bewildered. While standard nine aims to preserve historical integrity, this specific site does not currently reflect the values we want to preserve. But rather, it highlights the long-term neglect and disinvestment. It's a vacant lot. The new home meets the Secretary of Interior Standards. It complies with the city building codes. It supports a broader revitalization effort. It is sized, scaled and proportionate to fit the neighborhood. It balances historic character with modern needs. Represents forward-thinking goals for the community. It improves the physical condition of the property. Kids no longer have to play in trash. It strengthens the social and economic fabric of the area. And we didn't do this by ourselves. It was in collaboration with the preservation staff. We addressed and revised the project so that it aligns with all of the guidelines. We received full support from the staff and agreement here too. Standard ten. That new additions and alterations should be designed so that they can be removed in the future without impairing the essential form and integrity of the original structure. I showed you the original structure, right? There is none. Current condition, it's not occupied by any historic structure, but instead characterized by severe neglect. The site poses safety risks especially to children who access the debris-filled area. There are no historic materials or structures remaining on the lot. As such, there's no historic fabric to preserve or risk compromising. The proposed new home has been designed in accordance with the Secretary Standards. It meets all current city building codes, all current city building codes. Input was gathered from the local Historic Preservation Staff. I can't stress that enough. The staff is here on our behalf. This is not a reconstruction replacement, it's a revitalization effort. The design respects the architectural character of the neighborhood and aims to blend harmoniously with it. Revitalizing this property will improve the neighborhood's safety and aesthetics. The project contributes positively to addressing the shortage of workforce housing in the area. There's two pictures up there, the left and the right. The one on the left has a modern roof line. This is what I heard the board members going back and forth in their conversation. The roof line's too modern. You had the one on the right to choose from. If that's too modern, tell me what this is. Neon lights and all, Miami, that's about as modern as you get. I didn't make this up, this is Google Earth. That blue dot represents eight sixteen Third Street. That is one block away, but yet and still. That single-family home is too modern? I'm not reaching for straws here, guys. We all know where that is. This is actually just two blocks. Is that too modern? Is it that that home is too modern or is not enough units? Board member comments again. The homes need to match. Picture on the left would be the left side of that fence that I showed you facing the lot. The picture on the right would be the right side. Those would be the neighbors. They don't match. Same side of the street, a little further down. Picture on the right, single-family home. Picture on the left, multi-unit. They don't match. I will continue. Trust me, you can hardly see it, but underneath that tree is another multifamily home. Single-family home, multifamily home, and none of those match. That is directly in front of the lot. So when you say they don't match. I don't understand what you mean. Arbitrary assertions went advantageous. Board comments, roof line, house doesn't match. This one I highlighted because they specifically put it in a denial letter. Additional compatible criteria set forth in Historic Preservation Ordinance. Can anyone tell me what that is? If you truly wanted this project to get across the finish line, you'd have given me a finish line. Tell me what it is that I need to do to make it happen. Did not. What you see in front of you are previous decisions that I personally have to deal with from the Historic Board. That property there is eight two two Tamrin. That was the first project that my wife and I did with the CRA. General contractor for that project was Toby Hartnett and Hartnett Group. The reason why I bring this up is because if they would have said to me, standards nine and ten apply, this is where I can say they apply. Toby came to me and said, Mr. Humber, unfortunately, the building was deemed not usable. I said, what do you mean, Toby? He said, well, you can't live in it, you can't occupy it, we're going to have to take it down or replace it. I said, so we're going to tear it down and build a new one, a replica, correct? He said, no, we have to take it down wall by wall and rebuild it because the Historic Board wants it that way. To the tune of over a hundred thousand dollars more. Are you thinking about the end user? So they did. Brand-new walls, brand-new flooring. For those of you who can see that picture on the left-hand side, there's one thing they didn't replace. Because they needed to keep something historic, the roof trusses. Why is that such a big deal? Well, for any of you who tried to get insurance in the last five years, you know you have to have what they call a ten-year new roof. Your roof has to be within ten years. And although they did all that they could, putting the straps and bringing it up to code, putting on new plywood, putting on new, everything else new, it still doesn't pass. So the end user, once again, suffers. There's no way to get, at this time, to get winter hurricane insurance on that. Back to where we are, and I bring that roof up to you on purpose. Does that roof line really look that much different? You spent an extra hundred thousand dollars to keep that roof line on the left. We went out of our way at Signet Foundation to make sure we found a house that was as compatible with this neighborhood as possible. Accepted versus denied? They don't make shotgun homes anymore, guys. This is the new, that was nineteen twenty-something, this is twenty twenty-five. This is as close to a shotgun home as you're going to get. It's as close to what is in this community as you're going to have. Think about the end user. I know it's not, people say, oh, it's not their job. It is their job. We're here for the people. At the end of the day, you serve your constituents. They thought it better to deny that home on the right and leave it as a vacant lot with trash-laden bottles. Than to put that home up and put a new family in there. What I'm requesting, while standard nine and ten remains important for the Historic Preservation, their application should be contextual. I've proven to you that nine and ten don't match this lot. Given the lack of historic material on site, the pressing need for revitalization, the respect, we respectfully request the consideration of these unique circumstances and evaluation of this project. Acknowledge the particular surroundings and the community's benefits. Recognize the alignment with the city's revitalization goals and support the project as a step towards meeting the urgent housing needs. Thank you for your time, thank you for your vote in moving this project forward.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? I know we have staff that's also going to speak, right, from the CRA? Well, okay, we've got a couple of staff members, but any questions for Signet? Thank you for that presentation. Okay, let's, who's next?
Yeah, I'll go first. Hello, Mayor and Commissioner Jade Green, Deputy Director with the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency. He already walked you through the timeline, so I'm not going to repeat it. This property was acquired in two thousand and ten by the CRA, unfortunately inactive for over twenty years. We did put out the notice of disposition in October of twenty twenty-three. And with several proposals and the CRA Board did select Signet Foundation and we entered a conveyance agreement in twenty twenty-four. With the understanding that Signet Foundation would put this property under construction and put a modular structure on this site. He has reached a stop with this denial for the certificate of appropriateness. The CRA is just advocating for this project as it does align with CRA's and city's goals to offer affordable housing in the historic Northwest. As well as preserving the historic fabric of the community. So we're just extending staff recommendation in the sense on the CRA's end.
So staff, CRA recommends this project?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ward?
Jade, I know you're not a planner and on the Historic Preservation, but just his comment about that he wasn't provided additional compatibility criteria. Are you aware of them providing any guidance for the additional compatibility criteria?
I'm not sure the Historic Preservation's role in providing the guidance, but he did collaborate thoroughly with the CRA and the Planning Department before going to Historic Preservation Board. I do think he was hit with some questions that, you know, he wasn't necessarily prepared for, they didn't anticipate, hence the frustration with the feedback he received. But he definitely, you know, if he, I think he's saying if he would have known those questions that he was approached with beforehand, he could have addressed them better in the design.
Or be told afterwards, I guess.
Yeah, or, you know, sometimes they give the approval with conditions, but he didn't get that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant had presented us or presented us with photographs that attempted to depict, I guess, the properties in close proximity to this property. Would staff agree that those photographs are representative of the properties in the area? I mean, did he cherry pick properties that don't match what a historic building would look like? Or were they representative and accurate of the surrounding area?
So they are accurate of what is existing.
Please state your name, photographer, please.
Anne Volsey, Planner Development Services. Good evening, everyone, mayor. So to answer your question, it is representative of what is in the neighborhood. However, a lot of the structures, like the grand, are outside of the historic district. So they are not held to the same standard. They are, you know, in the downtown, so it's a little bit different. But I do understand his point in terms of compatibility. However, typically is just on the properties that are adjacent, next door, you know, in front of. So about, you know, the six properties, so yourself, the two around you and the three in front of, would be the contextual surrounding property.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Let me ask you a real quick question. Who is the Historic Preservation Staff? You remember the Historic Preservation Staff?
Yes.
And Historic Preservation Staff also recommended?
Approval, yes. I recommend approval.
Recommended approval to the Historic Preservation Board?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay, yes, follow-up, sir.
Thank you. So the two structures that I believe were in his presentation were the structures immediately next door to this property, correct? I think he showed us two, he showed us multiple properties, but I think he showed us the two that were right next door, correct?
Right next door, I believe, are these two.
Homes on either side.
And with that, I'm asking you to, I guess, guess what the Historic Preservation Board would want them to put up. But I guess something like that would be acceptable to them because that's what's already there?
Correct. That would be more along what is existing and the historic characteristic of the neighborhood. So typically, when they're designated, they are, the area is surveyed for the types of architecture that are present. So, and also these two, I believe, are not actually contributing to the, to the neighborhood, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Warren?
Yeah, I find it perplexing that a vacant lot could be contributing to the neighborhood if there's no structure currently there. But I do recall this project and I also recall when the R F P and there was the, there were the people that made their requests or they submitted their proposals. We knew at that time that what was intended to go here by this particular bidder was a modular structure. And I don't recall that there was a question or a requirement and that it be a contributing structure that goes into this space. I don't recall that being a part of the R F P process. The only thing that I do remember from that is that there were several people that presented. This one was selected because of their, their commitment to make this be an affordable project. To contribute to affordable and workforce housing in the neighborhood. So do you, and I So do you, and I know, um, Jade, you weren't here, but i- if you were to look at the RFP or have that information available, does it stipulate that this structure would be a shotgun house?
I looked at it earlier, not necessarily a, a shotgun house, but when they put out the notice of disposition and mentioned, um, the experience of doing historic, um, preserv- right, you know, it said historic preservation, because it is in a historic area. It didn't specify on being able to do a shotgun house particularly, no.
Can, can I add a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
When, because I, I heard a question, this Kimberly Rothenberg, um, for the record. The question about compatibility. So what, um, the staff was talking about is you, in historic districts, you have, uh, homes that are designated in the district and then those that are not. And I think that what staff was saying is that the two that were in the picture are not designated as, as historic structures within that district, but they're being shown as other, um, structures within the area. And if I could go back to Commissioner Ward's question about the additional criteria, when you look at the background, there are two sets of standards that are applied in reviewing historic structures. The first are the Secretary of Interior Standards, those were the specific sections eight and nine, that's in subsection three of the code. Subsection four of the code is additional criteria. Then there's a list of criteria. Staff has also found that the, um, buildings as proposed meet both the Secretary of Interior Standards and the additional criteria for new construction and alterations.
So this is staff's recommendation to the Historic Preservation Board? The Historic Preservation Board just basically ignored the staff recommendation?
Correct.
Is that what happened?
Yes, and it, it is, again, just a recommendation, but that is what happened.
Okay. Okay. We won't talk about staff recommendations at this time. Um, but anyway, Commissioner, President Lambert?
Thank you. You know, I, um, represent and have lived in a number of historic neighborhoods in our city, and I'm extremely grateful for the work of our Historic Preservation Board, and I know that, you know, as this body, we've sat in front of a few of these appeals and sometimes upheld them and sometimes overturned them. Um, and I do not want to discredit the work and the opinions of the Historic Preservation Board. They've been doing this a long time, they care very deeply about the historic preservation. But I, I do think that the case that was made here, um, you know, is valid and that, um, given the, the, while it's a historically designated neighborhood, the surroundings are not all designated historic, that obviously there's nothing on this site. And a statement that I made earlier, I think, really applies here as well, which is, with the right approach, we can grow in a way that respects the past while embracing the future. And that's what I see happening here. And, you know, I'm especially grateful that we're sticking to our goals of workforce and affordable housing and a, a beautiful home that, uh, new homeowner can be very proud of.
Wha- what I struggle with is applying these standards in parts of our city that sorely need revitalization. And so it's almost like these standards become the impediment to revitalization. We had a vacant piece of land on either side of it or some less than desirable homes. We're talking about a brand-new home built from the bottom up for affordable housing? And these, I won't say arbitrary, but these standards that are being applied by this body seem to totally ignore the context. This, this isn't El Cid. Uh, this is an area that needs revitalization, and, and to me, this is a nonsensical decision. Commissioner Ward?
Just wanted to add, um, whenever I can make my staff's presentation.
No, 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 that, that's fine. That's, that's, I know, we, we got off track, but go ahead, Commissioner, and then we'll let her make the staff presentation.
I was just wondering, because we did see the, the roof pitch and the, versus the, which I actually think is more mid-century modern, more like historic, but I am not a historic planner, so I just, I, I wanted to say that. But I do see a lot of the pitches just regularly. So if we were to approve this, i- is it gonna be the, the pitch like this, or is it gonna be the uneven?
The, the pitch where it's
It's even?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll let staff, okay, Commissioner Fox? Oh, for the next time?
She said she could wait.
Oh, you, you're like, in advance, you're anticipating that I'll ask for questions, okay. Uh, we'll let staff make their presentation, and then we'll see what.
Thank you. Anne Wolssey, Planner Development Services, for the record. Um, so this is a de novo review by the City Commission, um, as if we're presenting it for the first time. So although it's good to have the context of what happened at the HBB, you guys are wearing the hat of the HBB tonight. Um, so, um, Lamont went and, you know, provided a great presentation with a lot of background and context, so I'll be brief, um, in what I present. So, um, again, as if I was presenting to the HBB, just to show the boundaries of the site, the proposed site plan. It is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom. Um, the proposed elevations right here would show the various openings. Um, and the front elevation in the front would shows the three, um, excuse me, I'm not sure if you can see it. The three windows was, um, changed to be one solid window, to be more compatible, um, with what is, um, you know, acceptable within the, um, historic district. Here is, uh, images, here are images of surrounding properties. Um, and yellow is eight sixteen Third Street, the subject property. Um, and red on the left is eight oh six Third Street, um, on the right is eight twenty-two Third Street, and at the bottom is eight thirteen Third Street, which is across the way from the subject property. Um, I have the map on the bottom right-hand side, and it shows, um, the various colors, um, that are highlighted right here. So the subject property is in yellow, and the red means that it is non-contributing. So the only non-contribu- the only two within that street are the bungalow at eight oh three, excuse me, at eight oh three, and also, um, the Lonnie Colbert House. And I could come back to this one, um, if you guys want to see it. Staff is recommending approval of the request, um, as we find that it complies with all of these standards, um, presented. Um, and specifically the Secretary of Interior Standards of Rehabilitation, as well as the additional standards in section ninety-four dash four nine C four, um, and also the zoning and land development regulations. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Fox, would you have a?
Thank you. I just, I really find this outrageous that for two months now, we have, could be, basically have a whole house right there, but for this being turned down, it's absolutely ridiculous to me. But, I mean, I do wanna say thank you to, um, Lamont and Paula for being here today and being so patient because we have two business owners that are investing so much in the Northwest that had, wanted to move forward with this. I remember voting on it specifically, the module structure, one of the things that really stuck out was that it was gonna be quicker and less expensive so that the homeowner that could live there could be, you know, we could pass those savings along to somebody that could have a beautiful new home. And so I, I'm really, I apologize that this is happening because it's one of the things about government that I think is so frustrating. I don't know who I, who is on the Historic Preservation Board that perhaps there should be, you know, an appointee that lives in a different neighborhood and can see a different perspective. But anyway, I, I fully support this, and I did just wanna take the, the time to thank, thank, um, Lamont and Paula for being here tonight and being committed to this neighborhood and for being patient, and I'm really looking forward to having a new homeowner in the district, so thanks so much.
Okay, any other questions, comments for any of the staff or for the, uh, appellant, appellee? Which is it when you appeal? Which is it when you appeal? Appellant? Okay, I did get it right. I did used to practice law. Okay, so, um, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the certificate of appropriateness to allow the construction of a modular, single-family residence at eight sixteen Third Street. This motion is based on the factual testimony presented in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence along with the finding that the work meets the criteria set forth in the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation found in section ninety-four dash forty-nine C three and the additional criteria for new construction and alterations found in section ninety-four dash forty-nine C four of the zoning and land development regulations.
Second?
The move and seconded, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. During opposition, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, uh, Paula and Lamont for your interest in that area. Okay, uh, we will now turn to comments from the public. I have a few cards.
Oh, you have them.
You gave them to me. Okay.
I'm so efficient, I did it without even realizing.
Oh, my God. Okay, so I have some cards here, I'll read the names out. Amy Triggs, Jessica Prince, and Laurel Hanson.
Hi, Amy Triggs again. Um, so now that thirty-seven oh five flagler has passed, shockingly, um, I urge you all to pre- put a moratorium in place to stop further applications for building projects in this area so plan can be created. Um, I know it doesn't matter now, I just have to get this off my chest. Um, the developer met with the other adjoining conduits, who of course are going to like and support the building because they will benefit when they get bought out, and they want higher because they want their developer to give them more money. Um, Southland Park may be out of the zone, but I live less than point two zero miles away in Southland Park, and I will literally see this building from my backyard. I feel like the developer could have done more, and meeting with us March fourth was unacceptable. On another note, I first reached out to Rick Green in February regarding this project, and I never received a response. I called his office and was finally able to speak with his assistant, who provided information about the planning meeting in March. I also contacted the project planner, Mr. Swappy, via email and had to call his office multiple times before I was able to get any details. Frankly, that level of inaccessibility is unacceptable. We don't know how all this works. We're not the, you know, the developer who does this all the time and the attorneys. We're just, you know, concerned residents. We hear about stuff, but we really don't know how the process works. Learned a lot, though, in the last couple of weeks. But I emailed all of you commissioners in February expressing my concern about the project. When I heard about it and asked basic questions, now naively, have you heard about this building in my neighborhood? Has it been discussed? Was there a vote scheduled? What are the next steps? I received no replies, with the exception of Ms. Lambert, who responded ten days later asking for my specific concerns. I shared them immediately and also asked about any upcoming meetings where a vote might take place. Never heard back. I understand you all have other responsibilities and obligations, however, as elected officials, there's a duty to respond to constituents, especially when a major development project stands to permanently affect their neighborhood. Commissioner Lambert, as a representative for our area, you had a responsibility to inform us when this project first came across your desk, which I'm guessing was at least a year ago and likely even longer. A town hall or outreach effort could have allowed meaningful community engagement, collaborative decision-making, and potentially shape the process in a way that reflected the concerns of your residents. Instead, we came very late to this party, we were a last-minute invite, probably an afterthought, and it feels that of the vo- as though the voices of my neighborhood were completely disregarded in favor of developer, developer interests. Frankly, you've let us down. I sincerely hope that when March twenty twenty-seven arrives, my neighbors and the broader community will remember this and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Jessica Prince?
Hi, Jessica Prince, three zero two seven Washington Road. I just, I'm not gonna waste any more time on the development issue because I think we spent days on this and weeks in the meeting, but I just wanna second what Amy Triggs just said, and that's it for the record. Thank you.
Laurel Hanson?
Hi, Laurel Hanson, twenty-eight eighty-one South Library Drive. I love that this meeting has not gone into the four and a half hours that it did last time. This is awesome, but it's also partly because a lot of my neighbors didn't wanna come. They said they feel like the developers run the city, and it doesn't really matter if they come and talk. But I gotta tell you, I can't wait to go home and tell them. Based on what Commissioner Ward said tonight about the north end, we can have height restrictions. We can have predictability, and many of you guys really seem to agree that we really do need a plan. So no one is arguing that this building isn't beautiful, that it wasn't thoughtfully designed, and now it's passed. So now we have to look at what's coming next. We got five more buildings. We'd love to not come up here five more times. I'm asking, can we request a motion be made tonight to put a moratorium on any more proposals? Or waive a request for the remaining five buildings until we can get an overlay for this part of Flagler? I know you're not supposed to respond to the public, but is that possible? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now turn to, that's all the cards, right? Any other cards? All right, we'll now turn to comments from the dais, and we'll begin with you, President Lambert.
Thank you. Reiterating my comments from before and, and taking your, um, suggestion, Mayor, I would like to request of the city administrator that we schedule a workshop sooner rather than later to further discuss height predictability and discuss the, um, suggestion of a moratorium.
Those were your comments?
That was one comment, yes, that was just, okay. Um, I wanted to thank the Latin Quarter for, um, hosting another great community event. If you're not familiar, the Latin Quarter is a nonprofit organization that focuses on our Latin community, Spanish-speaking community, and, um, they held a job and safety fair, and thank you so much. Um, I saw our first responders, our firefighters, out there, and, um, it really was a great opportunity for, um, businesses and, um, job providers to meet with job seekers and saw a lot of great connections happening. Um, it was an honor to be at the Roosters Grand reopening, which is, um, historically designated and historically significant, um, bar in our community, and, and really, the comments that were made were more than just a restaurant or a bar. It was really, um, our community's first LGBTQ-plus, um, community center, and that really was this informal place where people could go and to feel safe and, um, feel welcome. They have reopened and, um, have an, um, amazing history on their wall in there, and I know that they're working with the Historic, um, Society on, on a presentation later this month as well. Wanna say congratulations, um, to all of the awardees for our Chamber of Commerce Business Awards. We had, um, many amazing honorees and awardees, and then our Lifetime Achievement Award went to Jeff Coons, who is no stranger to this city and all of the, um, many issues that he continues to advocate for. Wanna say congratulations to all of the, um, honorees. I was out of town this weekend with family, so I missed a number of amazing events, but I did wanna say congratulations to, um, the restaurant Montezuma on their thirtieth anniversary. If you have not been to Montezuma, let me tell you, it is a wonderfully delicious, authentic Mexican restaurant on South Dixie. I was looking at some of their, um, reviews online, and somebody commented, um, that they make their own house-made mole sauce, and they said, which is divine. I could not have said it better myself, so I would, um, encourage you to, um, visit them and say congratulations on their thirtieth anniversary. A few other events that I, I saw happen, I just wanna say thank you to, um, our police department and our CRA and all those who had a participation in the push and the heart and soul activation events. I think that, um, you know, anything we can do to get the community out, um, to show that we're working together and, um, have some fun while doing it is great, um, because I did wanna comment about, um, you know, the devastating news that we heard and woke up to, um, about a child who lost his life to gun violence, um, in our city. And I just wanna make the comment that the loss of any child is too much, and my, my heart goes out to the victim's family and friends who all loved him. And while we wrestle, um, with the pain of this senseless act, I know that our police department is working tirelessly on conducting a thorough investigation, and, um, I'm appreciative to Chief O'Rahoe and his team for, for keeping us updated on that. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. Um, before I get into the, the one topic, I just wanted to say that, um, two, two nights from now, uh, across the hall is the final Curry Park Outreach for Programming, uh, Food and Beverage. So if you're not tired out about, or if you haven't attended any of the other ones, please attend and give your thoughts. Um, and, uh, I know I had another comment, but I, I, I've, I've lost my trail. Um, I, I do wanna talk more about what that looks like and, and maybe have, have our, um, city attorney chime in. I know that from my discussions that, that have gone on for years, before I was a commissioner and to now, um, we, we tried to get some sort of a dis- it wasn't necessarily called the
called the moratorium, it just acts as a moratorium because you're starting to review guidelines and you're starting to create a plan. And so I don't, I, I wish that we had done that in North End. It's, you know, we're, we're working on that now to get things forward. But I worry that if we have a, you know, if, if everything else that goes on with the city between the downtown, you know, changes and things like that, that when can we get something on the books to have a work session on it, what, what that looks like? And will we be pushing the clock to start taking for other developers to come in and file like what's happened in the North End? And I go back and forth because I, you know, I, I told the residents who are sitting in here tonight, like I did, I, I do actually think the 18 works and it is a sectioned area, but I wholeheartedly agree that the next one could come in a lot higher and a lot higher and next, and we should provide predictability. And to the resident that spoke about the email from February, yes, I see it. And it's a lesson learned that usually I reach out, our aides are awesome, and so our aides always communicate. And so I knew Christina Lambert had responded to that email because Nerlan said Nathan and checked, and they all work together. And but it is a reminder that you guys deserve at least a response from that regard. And then I will try to do better to respond to every single email and not just check behind the scenes, hey, did the district commissioner respond to that. And so I appreciate that commentary. But I don't want that just to die out tonight as far as that conversation. So I am asking that question to you. What, what does that look like?
Well, generally speaking, just as I sit here, when a moratorium is adopted, they're adopted with the same formality as the zoning code changes through ordinance. So we would have to take formal action in order to stay new applications pending the development of new regulations.
Is that any of your comments? All right, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. I would start with how would we move that action forward? You, you said that there would, that we would need to act as a body, and I'd just like to know what would be necessary for that.
We would, we would bring forward an ordinance. Normally, it comes through the Planning and Zoning Division, the ordinance to adopt the moratorium while you, if in fact, you as a body are going to create new regulations.
So will we need to vote on that tonight?
Yeah.
To request that? How does that, what is the next step in that coming forward?
Well, I would think that you would get together as a body at your to-be-scheduled work session, give the direction that you all as a body want staff to move forward, and then staff will bring forward the appropriate documentation to bring to fruition what your desires are.
Thank you. And I'd like to also express my condolences to the tragic loss of life that occurred this, this past weekend. And it's just heartbreaking when we see that we lose our children, particularly to situations where guns are involved. And I know that there are a lot of details that have not been released due to the sensitivity of what has happened. But it's still heartbreaking. And condolences. Do save the date. Well, actually, I'd like to congratulate the high school seniors of West Palm Beach, the incredible class of 2025 for your hard work and determination and resilience have led you to this week and these moments and your recent graduations. Whether you're heading to college, joining the workforce, serving your community, or exploring new paths, know that your journey is just beginning. And we are all excited for you and all that you will experience and contribute to our great city. You faced challenges, grown through them, and now you stand at the edge of your next great adventure. West Palm Beach is proud of you, and the future is greater because of your dreams and you chasing and achieving them. Here's to a very early morning. Okay. Here's to every early morning, every late night study session, every laugh, every tear, and every triumph. You did it. Do save the date for Juneteenth, Red Teent Celebration on June 14th in Wellington. Mark your calendars for, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Town Center Amphitheater in Wellington. The important event commemorates Juneteenth and World Sickle Cell Day, raising awareness while celebrating freedom, unity, and community. Admission is free and everyone is welcome. Please visit sicklescellpbc.org for additional details. There is another Juneteenth event. Juneteenth of PBC Inc. announces their fifth annual Juneteenth Unity and Black Excellence Festival on June 22nd. The HBCU edition takes place on Saturday, June 22nd at the Meyer Amphitheater in downtown West Palm Beach from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. This vibrant and significant event is more than just a celebration, is a profound acknowledgement and educational experience dedicated to unity, upliftment, black excellence, and supporting black-owned businesses. Registration is free. And for more information, please visit juneteenthpbc.org. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if everyone has seen the autonomous vehicle that has been driving around City Place, but it's really cool. And I have never really been sure how to get on it and where the stops are. So tomorrow, everyone is invited to AV Carpool Karaoke. The AV vehicle will be picking, picking up at Bright Line Stop, and there will be karaoke. Wen Deng.
I'm sorry, did you say karaoke?
Karaoke, yes. Carpool Karaoke on the AV. So it's going to be a tutorial of how to get on it, where it stops, and there will be, in between stops, there will be.
Are there any karaoke lessons?
Songs. I don't know, but I, I have a feeling you don't need any lessons, Mayor. Mobility, Mayor, you are always welcome. Anyway, it starts tomorrow at 3:30 to 5:00, and it will be kind of circling around from Bright Line to City Place. Our own previous traffic engineer, Wen Deng, is hosting this. And it will just be a great opportunity for people in the neighborhood to get more familiar with it, to see how it's driving by itself, and to also sing along if you're so inclined. I wanted to also invite everyone, Fantasy Island in the Historic Northwest will have their grand opening on Friday, May 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Their address is 325 North Sepia Dilla. This is something that we, as a CRA body, have been supporting. And it's taken a little bit more time than expected, but it's finally open and I had the opportunity to see it this weekend. It's gorgeous. It's a lot of fun, and I hope you can all make it, 5:00 to 7:00 on Friday. Finally, I just wanted to thank the police department and the fire department and many representatives from city staff that joined the community in Historic Northwest on Saturday morning for a walk around the neighborhood. Particularly wanted to thank Chief Arajo and Deputy Chief Shearer for coming out. Their presence really made a difference, having the neighbors be able to show them some of the issues that are there and help find solutions. It was an unlucky day for a few people that may have been arrested on our walk because some of the areas where there are nuisance issues, they happened to be going on in real time when we were there. So I really appreciate that the chief was there, just being able to take into consideration all the things that the neighbors report sometimes. But it's, you know, there's nothing like being on the ground and being able to see it. So I appreciate them coming out. Many people from our fire department over there, Leon Pinder, Pinder was there from, and several people from sanitation helping to look for illegal dumping. So I'm just always, as many times as we can get out with the community and see things through their eyes, I really appreciate it. And that's all I have right now. Thanks so much.
Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you. Mayor, if you're going to be singing karaoke, I'm sure all of us are going to be there with our phones in hand to make sure that we don't miss one single note. So, on a more somber note, you know, I agree with my colleagues with regard to the loss of a child due to gun violence in our city. Unfortunately, we hear about shootings and, and, you know, we're a little city that has some big city problems, and we need to make sure that we're never becoming numb to, to our residents, you know, losing our residents to gun violence and especially our children. You know, when a child is, is killed in one of our neighboring cities, man, you hear about it every day. It's, it's on all the social media. Everyone talks about it. And unfortunately, I think we've become a little numb to it here. Maybe not numb to children because we don't hear of that every day, but certainly gun violence, we're still, you know, hearing of it way too much. And this administration has done a phenomenal job, I think, though, of curtailing the gun violence. I think when the mayor and I were initially elected, when mayor was elected to the mayoral office and I was elected as a commissioner, the numbers were astronomical. We were on the U.S. News and World Report for being one of the most violent cities. And, and within six months of the new administration, we were off that list. So I think we've made progress. I think there's still progress to be made. Regarding the public comments and some of our failure to respond to an email that we received, certainly not making any excuses, and I'll take the same, make the same pledge that Commissioner Ward made, that I'll do better in trying to make sure that I respond to all emails. But what I did hear that was very positive from, from one of the public comments was that all of the commissioners, save maybe one commissioner who was out of town, met with this group that was concerned about this issue. I remember meeting, I don't know, half hour, 45 minutes at least, talking to, to people about their concerns. And, you know, I don't think I've ever turned down a request to meet with me in person. I may not be perfect about responding to emails all the time because we get a lot of them, and sometimes they do get lost. But I think we do, as a body, we do a pretty good job of agreeing to meet with our constituents. You know, our doors really are open. With regard to the talk of a moratorium, you know, I think that with regard to building height and the like, I think we just have to be careful. You know, it's, we're in this period of time right now that's, that's hot. Development is, is here. People want to develop in our city. And we have to remember that it hasn't always been this way, and it probably will cease to be this way one day in the future. Hopefully not in the near future, but it's likely to happen. And I think that if we, if we talk about a moratorium, it would have to be for a very short period of time for us to be able to quickly develop some sort of, of development, you know, plan. But that any moratorium that lasts more than a fairly short period of time, I think, could be detrimental to our city and our goals in making sure that we, you know, redevelop some of these sections of our city that really need redevelopment while developers, while developers are actually interested in developing. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I will refrain from making any commitments to participate in any karaoke anytime soon. But believe me, if I do it, you'll be the first to know, commissioners, I promise you. Few announcements. At a May 14th news conference, we celebrated the launch of Operation Coast, which is Crisis Outreach and Support Team. This is an innovative healthcare district program that has already connected over 87 West Palm Beach residents to life-changing behavioral health support. Since August of 2024, the city has partnered with the Palm Beach Chiefs Association in the healthcare district on this behavioral health pilot program. We remain, as a city, we remain deeply committed to leading with compassion, acting with purpose, and ensuring every resident receives the support they need, when and where they do it, when and where they need it most. We're proud of the partnership. The city was the first city to sign up for this pilot program, and we look forward to building on its success. On May 16th, city crews mobilized for a full-scale hurricane preparedness drill, clearing nearly 50 tons of simulated storm debris. Teams from Public Utilities, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Fire Rescue work together to ensure West Palm Beach is ready to respond quickly and effectively this hurricane season, which begins on June 1st, which is Saturday, Sunday? Anyway, it's this week. The city is prepared, and we urge every resident to be too. Now is the time to make a plan, build a supply kit, and stay informed. Preparedness is a shared responsibility. I will say this now, and I'll probably say it every time I speak, urge everyone to visit wpv.org and click Hurricane Guide for a hurricane readiness guide. You can't start too soon. And I know there are a number of people who have lived here in West Palm Beach and have not gone through a hurricane, and I hope they won't have to go through one at least over the next two years. But anyway, I hope they don't have to go through one anytime soon. But be prepared. Another note, city of West Palm Beach was honored as the Clean Cities Champion 2023, is that a typo, by the Southeast Florida Clean Cities Coalition for its leadership in clean transportation and sustainability. The city also earned Silver EV Adoption Leadership certifications of three of our parking garages. Furthering our commitment, the Charge at Work pledge was signed to support environmentally sustainable infrastructure. These recognitions reflect our ongoing efforts to build a cleaner, greener West Palm Beach. Another positive note, the International Parking and Mobility Institute has awarded the city of West Palm Beach the Accredited Parking Organization with Distinction. That's the highest recognition for excellence in parking, transportation, and mobility. The honor reflects our commitment to best practices in service, sustainability, safety, and innovation. We're proud to be recognized as a national leader in mobility management. It's about moving people and not cars. Someone mentioned this earlier. I hope you could join the city of West Palm Beach's CRA and your neighbors for a community outreach session focused on park programming and the future Curry Park Restaurant. Share your ideas, ask questions, and hear from city consultants about the plans and progress. The final in-person meeting will take place on Thursday, May 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall and the Flagler Gallery right outside these chambers. That's at 401 Clamatta Street. That's Thursday, May 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Flagler Gallery at City Hall. A discussion about the future Curry Park Restaurant and also park programming. The city's public art program, Art Life West Palm Beach, launches third iteration of the Commons, an initiative to encourage local artists to take their projects out of the art studio and into the public realm. The Commons, five artists, five spaces, is now open to the public, showcasing site-specific installations by five local artists across the city, including City Hall, the Mandel Public Library, and Jose Marti Park. And this June, next month, we're celebrating 30 years of Clamattis by Night with the CBN Big Three L. It'll be a month-long party on the waterfront every Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. starting on June 5th. These events are free, family-friendly, and full of live music, food trucks, games, and surprises. We hope to see you all there. On the moratorium discussion, we will be, I'll be talking with the city administrator, and we will try to schedule a workshop. It's, it's a much more detailed conversation. And I have to tell you now, I'm not in favor of a moratorium because that puts up a sign we're closed for business, but we can have that conversation at some point. So that concludes my remarks for tonight. Good night. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. This meeting is adjourned.